Let's push. And I always hear it all, when I'm not talking. But I might lean on and say something to you, but I don't want the rest of the people to hear. So that's...
See? So we need to find out.
As long as you're with me.
How are we gonna...
You know what? I think we ought to have what's-his-name drive us over there.
The courier?
So we don't have to pay parking. We don't have to disrupt our families.
Can he pick us up?
Where are you guys going?
I never thought of that question.
You guys somewhere without me?
Why not? Yeah, I never thought of that.
I thought of that today, because Lynn's gonna need my, uh, car. Oh, my God.
And if... If, 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 if words comes to shove, I can pick you up.
I know, but then you gotta pay parking.
Yeah, but it's gonna be on the board. It's only over the weekend.
Well, that's true, too. You pick me up.
Yeah, I can pick you up.
That's not true driving more than I trust you.
Do you? Even in your car? Make sure it means something. That's it. Yeah, so we can get home.
I'll call to order the January 11th, 2016, regular board meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that everyone please silence your cell phones and digital devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're not getting this one in, because we don't need you.
Yeah.
So we don't need a roll call.
Per Board bylaw 0152, officers in Ohio revised code 3313.10 oath of office of member, we will now prepare for the oath of office. Mrs. Wagner, elected board members, Ms. Carolyn Jones, and if you have any family members, please prepare for the oath of office. After we take a roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
I am present.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Minera?
Here.
Mr. Nelms?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Jones and Ms. Wagner? Stayed in. You can come over here, yeah. So you can get good pictures and that kind of...
Show, honey, do whatever you want.
Yeah. You can do whatever you want.
So if you'll raise your right hand or repeat after me. I state your name. Do you solemnly swear?
I, Carolyn Jones, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
discharge the duties of the, of a board member.
Discharge the duties of a board member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the City Cincinnati School District of Cincinnati, Ohio.
Of the Cincinnati City School District of Cincinnati, Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance of office. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, I'd like to offer you any comments or that you'd like to give?
Thank you. I, I do have just a brief statement, I hope. Those of you who know me know that I'm not normally, I'm not usually nervous about anything. Today, I'm nervous. But, um, anyway, this is a proud moment for me. It is indeed an honor to be here tonight, formally seated alongside members of Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education and the wonderful staff and administration of Ohio's top-ranked urban school district. Receiving the formal oath of office tonight seems so surreal. I've had opportunity over the years to be an observer of CPS's board process, sitting up there, listening to many discussions of the district around various agendas. Never in a million years did I think that I'd be sitting here. But you see, a power much larger than me had a plan. One that included a life path of service to the community on behalf of our children. I am very blessed and fortunate to be entrusted by the community of Cincinnati to have a role in guiding the future of this district to achieve its goals for providing the best quality and most equitable education for our children. And I can honestly say that in the short time since the November election, I've had great exposure and the privilege to experience the many strengths of this district. At the same time, as in every school district in Ohio and across the country, our communities are challenged by the many legal mandates, the personal interests, and other agenda that sidetrack us from what's really important. So I'm not so naive as to think that this job is going to be a piece of cake, because there's much work to do. However, my commitment is to give 110% effort and dedication toward achieving the district's goal. I am grateful for this opportunity and look forward to working with all of you. I want to acknowledge and thank my family and friends who came out to support me tonight, as they always have. And I do wanna acknowledge and re- I wanna ask my family and friends to please stand up.
That's a posse.
A posse. These... Yes. So, and, and these are the people who surround me and, you know, helped me with my campaign and, uh, really keep me honest and keep, and serve as my barometer. These are the ones who say, um, "Mom, keep pushing," or "Mom, uh, it's time for you to take a break," or, "Carolyn, do what you do best." But I really appreciate that they even cared enough to come down here with us. Um, and I, I really appreciate it and want you all to know, uh, that I really love you all. And, um, so as I said, they continue to be my best barometer, and I love them for that. Thank you so much, and I am CPS. Thank you.
Yes, any board discussion?
Yeah, Madam Vice President, if we could have the family and friends come down, as we do often, and have them stand in the well here, under the light, so that the whole big family and friends picture can be taken to memorialize this great evening. So, fixing their hair, adjusting their shirts. Come on down, if that's okay.
Right here?
Right here.
Right here?
Right here, in the light.
I'll come out of the way.
Okay.
In the light.
No.
Because the light's better, Christopher.
Sure, I will do that.
And, and as you can see, Chris knows just about everybody in that city.
Sure does.
Everybody in the city.
Excuse me. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Who's taking the picture?
Well, you got enough cell phones up there.
Chris. Chris is there. Chris, get over here. Chris Nelms. Intruder.
No.
I don't know. Twenty-some years.
Alrighty, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Welcome. We are so excited to have you here and know that you have a lot of community support and... Welcome. Per Board bylaw 0152, officers, I need a motion to elect a board president for the year 2016. Nominations are now in order for the office of the president.
I nominate Erica Copeland-Dansby for president.
Are there any seconds?
A second.
No seconds are necessary. Roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
Very well. It looks like there's an oath of office that's necessary.
Wow, I'm confused.
So, um, repeat after me.
Sure.
I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
I, Erica Copeland-Dansby, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education.
Discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education.
Of the Cincinnati City School District of Cincinnati, Ohio.
Of the Cincinnati City School District of Cincinnati, Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I do wanna just say a couple things. First and foremost, I wanna thank my, um, board colleagues at the table for your vote and for your confidence. It really means the world to me. Um, I appreciate working with each and every person here and the passion that we share to support our kids and the education of all students. Um, we've shared an amazing past two years, um, and I'm looking forward to this upcoming year. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to continue our work together, to move the district forward through our vision, our mission, and our strategic goals. Equitable access to quality education is at the forefront of our thinking and our actions. Educating all students with rigor and care and expecting excellence is the norm for us. And ensuring that all students are prepared for life is the core of our mission. We will arrive at this end by relentlessly pursuing our strategic goals. And I need you to bear with me for a moment. These are very important. First of all is great communities. Being inclusive of our network of parents, community, and other stakeholders, we will work to build safe, vibrant schools at the center of safe, vibrant communities. Great learning environments. We will support the creation of highly engaging learning environments where every child in every school engages in rigorous learning while being supported by caring adults. Great systems. We will ensure the equitable, equitable distribution of all operations and resources that are focused solely on high academic achievement for all of our students. Great learning choices. Educating and supporting the whole child and demonstrating appreciation for every student as a unique individual will be our guiding principle. And great people. Enabling the recruitment, growth, and advancement of distinguished professionals committed to serving diverse students with a high regard for equity and in a manner characterized by rigor, innovation, and accountability. I've been working in education and in the public for more than 25 years, specifically on the problem of how to ensure all children receive an outstanding education. And this is not just my professional passion. My son is a 2016 graduate. I must say that. As a parent, a former teacher, and an advocate, I deeply believe that every student in every neighborhood deserves to attend an outstanding neighborhood school. I'm committed to an ongoing collaborative approach with my peers. I look forward to moving forward with an aggressive and very futuristic plan from our administration to provide an excellent 21st century curriculum for our students and supporting our staff inside and outside of our buildings. I've witnessed our dedicated staff working one-on-one in our school buildings with our kids, and my message is, "Keep up the good work." And of course, I support a deep-involved relationship with our community at large. So here's to a year of promise, a year of crucial decisions, and a year of increased partnerships with our community and our stakeholders. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on the 2016 board committees?
What do we have to do?
I forgot one thing very important. We will now have nominations for our vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Member Melanie Bates for the vice presidency of the board.
Second.
All right.
Although, there are no seconds necessary. And so I believe we'll have to give an oath in office? I'm so excited, I'm just...
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
Excellent. Now we'll do the oath in office. I apologize for that.
I state my name. Do solemnly swear.
I, Melanie Bates, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the Cincinnati City School District of Cincinnati, Ohio.
Of the Cincinnati City School District of Cincinnati, Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office. Thank you.
I think at this time, I'm supposed to exchange seats with the vice president. That's a good thing.
Do it fast.
Just right before you get tricked, right?
Thank you. Welcome, welcome.
You want your name?
We can switch names, too. Sometimes it's fun to be me.
I wanna first give our newly-appointed vice president an opportunity for any remarks, and then I will actually open the floor for other members to give remarks as well.
Well, thank you, and mine will be very brief. Um, I'm honored to have the confidence of the board with this office and those in the community who know me have entrusted me with the stewardship of this district for quite some time. Uh, my promise is that I will continue to provide, uh, the servant leadership that I have exhibited and hopefully, uh, meet the expectations of all of you. Uh, my job is to help educate the children of this district and to provide leadership to the community and to this board, and that is what I will do alongside my colleague Erica Copeland-Dansby, newly-elected president. Thank you.
Are there any other remarks or comments from other members? Ms. Hoffman?
Um, I think this is a great time to, um, talk about some of the great stuff that's happening in our district, while we have an audience here talking, um, to talk with. And it's such a celebratory time with our, our new leadership and our new board member. Uh, and I think one of my favorite parts about being in this role, which will not come as any surprise to anyone here, is the time we get to spend in our buildings. And I'm always come away so impressed by the teaching and the learning and the leading happening in every one of our schools. Uh, and so I wanna take a minute to just call out a couple of things I've seen recently. There are so many examples, but one of them was when I was over at Hughes High School. There's a biology teacher over there who has amassed, uh, basically a zoo in his classroom. Uh, and I asked him how this happened. How, where did all these animals come from? And he said, you know, biology is the study of life and living things. And very early in his career, he said, "I looked out at my classroom and said, 'The only living things in here are my students and me.'" And so he started with a fish tank. And, uh, if you go in his classroom now, there are some fish tanks, but there are also tanks with amphibians and reptiles. And while we were talking, there was birds squawking from all corners. And just what an amazing place to learn about biology. Um, and then I went over to Riverview East, and their, uh, health sciences classes are changing kids' lives. I talked to, um, the teacher over there, and she talked about how, um, some of her kids were really struggling academically or, uh, or behaviorally. And then they started her class, and they understood the purpose for why they were coming to school every day. And now they're graduating not just with a high school diploma, but with a degree, a, a health sciences degree, that they can go right to work or, or continue to advance in, in their education. Uh, and then I've brought up before the principal over at Parker Woods Montessori. I joined just their regular weekly parent tour. Uh, and I don't think I've ever seen someone so passionate about Montessori education as the principal of Parker Woods. Uh, we just have so many great things happening in CPS to be proud of. I think like our other board members and our newest board member we're talking about, though, is that we also know we have a lot of work left to do to get to the place where we all wanna be, where all of our children in every neighborhood and in every school are getting what they need and they deserve to be successful. And so over the next few months, our family and community engagement team is going to be out in the community, talking with neighborhoods, um, about new programming options to strengthen our neighborhood schools, um, as well as potential options for new schools to respond to the demand that we're seeing. And so we're excited to hear from the community about what we can be doing to really strengthen those options in our neighborhoods. Um, and just echoing the other board members here, really wanna thank Superintendent Ronan and her team for their leadership and the urgency that they, uh, operate with, just with the understanding that we know our kids need us and need us now. Um, thanking the families who trust us with their kids. Um, uh, and also thanking the teachers and staff members and administrators who work with our kids every day. We're looking forward to another great year, big decisions, a big year ahead of us. But that's a really, uh, and we have a lot of impressive stuff happening.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Nelms?
Ditto.
Anyone else? Ms. Bolton?
Just, uh, besides ditto about all the good things that are happening in our buildings, I have, uh, complete confidence in our president and our vice president, and I think the board has demonstrated, uh, that we will continue to be a collaborative body, putting the kids first and also our taxpayers and the wider community and knowing that what we do impacts greatly the entire region, uh, more so than perhaps anybody else. And having watched some things over this last couple of weeks of other organized, organized bodies of elected officials, I feel very good about our particular atmospherics, if you will, as well as our united, uh, uh, how shall I say it? United commitment, uh, to the future. And, uh, I think we're poised, as I've said a number of years now, poised for greatness. I think we are looking at an opportunity with the superintendent and the treasurer to be on a launchpad for even greater opportunities. And as far as I know, we're one of the very few school districts on this side of the Mississippi River that's not only completely rebuilt itself, but is actually increasing in enrollment. Uh, this is a model for the rest of the country, and we have a big obligation to, to, um, be successful. And so again, congratulations to our leaders and, uh, look forward to having a very productive and accelerated year of activity.
Thank you. Mr. Minera?
Well, let me just chime in by saying, I've been up since 3:00. My wife had a baby today, so I'm trying to... Thank you.
What school was she at 10:00? You can answer that.
I, I came in because the state requires us to cast a vote, and so what an honor to be here, and I want an honor to also be a new dad. Um, but that just brings something to perspective. Um, it's great to continue to promote all the good things that we're doing, but we got a lot of work to do. Um, I feel like it's been a great two years for me to work with all of you. I feel like, um, I'm excited about the leadership. But, but most of all, I'm excited that we actually get some much-needed work on a very crucial year for us. So I hope that whoever's listening out there, those who are here, those who are on the internet, and those who will catch this later, that you hold us completely accountable for all the decisions that are gonna be made this year. I think community engagement is something every single board member here, um, has, is making a priority, if not already has as a priority. Um, but that's gonna require the community's part as well. We need to hear you. We need you to come to our meetings. Yes, absolutely, it's our responsibility to go out to you. But sometimes it's, it's so much easier if, if we can hear your voice, because it could get overwhelmed with all the other issues we gotta take care of. So, um, you have great leadership at the helm. I believe that these two ladies are gonna do an amazing job. Um, and so we all need to hold ourselves accountable, and we need to ask you to hold us accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Is there any discussion on the 2016 board committees?
I don't have any discussion, but it probably would be helpful if we, uh, at least listed the appointments and the committees as they stand. I think we usually do that to, and then, uh, figure out how... I think we usually do that, and then figure out how we're going to meet in order to determine our meeting schedule, so that would be my suggestion.
You want to announce the...
I think we should announce the committees and membership, because I think we did complete that work, if I recall.
Yes. Well, for 2016, our Board Committees are the Finance Committee, and the members who are serving are Board Member Bates, Board Member Bolton, and Board Member Jones. Our Community Partnership and Public Engagement Committee will now take place through our COW meetings, which means Committee of the Whole meetings, and so all Board Members are a part of Community Engagement. Our Policy Committee members are Board Member Jones, Board Member Hoffman, and Board Member Nels. And our Student Achievement Committee consists of Board Member Bolton, Board Member Hoffman, and Board Member Manera. There are a host of organization appointments, and I'll list them. Our Cincinnati Recreation Commission will be chaired or led by Mr. Nels. Our Ohio School Boards Association, the person who serves on the Board of Trustees is Board Member Nels. Our Legislative Liaison is Board Member Bolton. The Southwest Region Executive Committee Leadership will be Board Member Nels. And the Urban School District Advisory Network will consist of Board Member Bolton, Board Member Dansby, and Board Member Jones. Activities beyond the classroom will have a great group of folks, Board Member Dansby, Board Member Jones, and Board Member Nels. The Council of Great City Schools' representation is Board Member Bates. And our Discipline Committee will consist of Board Member Dansby, Board Member Jones, and Board Member Manera. And our Preschool Promise Committee will consist of Board Member Hoffman and our Administration. And there is a Cincinnati's Preschool Conference Committee that consists of Board Members Bates, Bolton, and Hoffman. And so those are the 2016 Board Committees and the 2016 Board Organization Appointments. Is there any discussion?
I heard my name quoted quite a bit, and I love serving, but I just wanted to know, could I be considered for some form of compensation? And feeding me once a month through COW will suffice, so thank you.
You have to see Board Member Bolton for that. Any other comments? No? Excellent.
We do need to decide when we're going to meet this committee.
Yeah, according to the...
We are coming early for pictures for the next COW. Could we be, when you're not taking your picture, could we be deciding then when we're meeting? Do you know what I mean? Is that making sense?
Yeah, I think the sooner the better.
Right, because we need to...
And I don't know if it's the next COW, is that next week?
Wednesday, the 20th.
Or...
Away.
Or could we do it through email or messaging among the three? So, I mean, it's my preference on behalf of the Administration and our meeting lengths, that as many of these that can happen during the business day, I think is better than having very many late or later times. And I know we have a number of folks that are working versus retired and whatever, so I'm just thinking that among each of the committees, somebody could start a dialogue and resolve that. And then if Mrs. Davis can, excuse me, can put together what that would be so that we're not in conflict with each other, that would be helpful.
Excellent. Ms. Bates?
I have a bold recommendation.
Uh-uh.
Ms. Nels, hold on to your seat. Can we all get trained on Google Calendars, please?
I amen that, because I need that.
You're going to get outvoted. We will help you, we will support you.
In reference to...
Google Calendars. That will help Mrs. Davis so much. I need a brushing up, and I'm sure that we'll be able to arrange that we all have computer access, and that way we don't have to have...
Good suggestion.
Can it be more than a suggestion? Can we like do this? And can this be set up, you know, within the next week that we meet with somebody from technology to at least brush people up, make sure they have Gmail addresses and all of that, well, whatever is needed? Can that be an assignment from the Board to the Administration?
Okay, great. So we'll do the Google Calendars. My suggestion for naming the leadership of the Committees would be that you guys do it via email and make your decisions there. We've had a great deal of conversations, so we probably know where we stand there, so that should be relatively simple. So I need a motion to approve the 2016 Board Committee schedules.
So moved.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nels?
Aye.
Ms. Bates, please present the Organizational Business Item Resolution for Board Consideration.
All right. I have a resolution to approve the 2016 Organizational Meeting Business Items, and I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nels?
Yes.
Excellent. I do want to publicly congratulate Mr. Manera. He beat me to the punch, like he always does. To publicly congratulate him on the birth of his new daughter, Liliana. What a beautiful name, an eight-pound bouncing baby girl. And so we really, really appreciate you taking the time to come in. Having no other business come before this Board, I declare this meeting adjourned. We're going to go into another meeting. That's it.
We want to come out to me? And then between these meetings, I have to get going back to Liliana, so I will miss this other part, so thank you, have a good night.
Ready on this one? You ready? All right. So just so that the public is aware, that was our organizational meeting that's mandated by the Ohio Revised Code, where we elect officers and set our committees, and so now we're going to go into our regular business meeting. And so if you're going to be able to stay, we appreciate your involvement.
No wonder we had two agendas.
I know.
So we're not taking a break or anything.
Okay, so I'm just going to go. I call to order the January 11, 2016, regular meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that you please silence your cell phones. Please stand for the pledge.
That's a doubleheader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh-oh.
You can go if you want to. You can go. Somebody got a present.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland Dansby?
Present.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Manera? Mr. Nels?
Chair.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Special Public Meeting of December the 10th and a regular Board Meeting December 16th.
They'll move.
Second.
Excellent. We don't have to roll call that. And so there are a couple Committee Reports. Well, actually, the only Committee Report to report out on is the last PPE meeting, and as the former Chair, I'd like to point out, we met with K-12 Insight and had a really in-depth presentation of our Strategic Priority Survey. And so the key things that were listed and were prioritized by our community are listed here in the minutes, but they were budget, charter schools, communication, customer service, expansion of preschool, great learning choices, My Tomorrow, progress on district and board goals, and the Whole Child Initiative. And so you'll see in the minutes several key highlights from the survey, along with an update related to our Allegiance Project, and regular monthly updates from the FACE Team. And so I present this as a retin. Are there any comments from our January 6 Committee of the Whole Report, which is also in your packet? If there aren't any, then we need a voice vote to accept the Committee Reports. As Richmond, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any that are opposed? Great. So moving on, our presentation tonight will be Withrow Junior Achievement Entrepreneurial Video, and we've got a nice-looking group of folks who are here. Ms. Superintendent?
Yes, indeed. We have Kim McGee, who is the Junior Achievement Vice President of Education. We have administrators from Withrow. We have Don Williams and Eric Higgins. We have Craig Rush, a teacher, and some fabulous students to do a presentation tonight. So why don't you all come down, and I'm not sure who the first speaker is.
Welcome.
Thank you all for being here. Oh, and you brought, my gosh, refreshments and food, thank you. Chocolate, oh, thank you.
Greetings from Withrow University High School. My name is Don Williams. I'm one of the administrators there.
Welcome.
I'm Eric Higgins, Assistant Principal, Withrow University High School, serving my fourth year.
Oh, thank you so much.
Mr. Daniels could not be here today. He's away on official school business. We would like to say thank you for allowing our students the opportunity to present tonight. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Craig Rush, our Social Studies Demonstration Classroom Teacher, who will discuss this community service project that the students worked on, and introduce the students as well for them to speak to you at this time. Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. It's awesome to be here today. I'm very proud of our students, so the All-Stars are going to get to speak in just a moment. This is an awesome project, which we partnered up with the Mayerson Service Learning Foundation. Claire Blankenmeyer was really huge. Ms. McGee also was huge in helping this from the junior achievement side. It was a great community partnership. And one of the people who was a big part of it is Mr. Foltz, Mr. Les Foltz. If you would come in, maybe talk, he's a business partner who helped our students out a lot.
Good evening, and thanks for having us. And I just want to comment on the importance of this campaign or program. I've been a volunteer with Junior Achievement for five years, all over the region, from Hamilton to Mount Hailty and to Cincinnati, and the experience at Withrow was just mind-blowing. These students were committed to starting their businesses, and I really didn't know the full extent of the campaign until further through the program. But I was, to say that I was impressed is a bit of an understatement. It was a real opportunity for these students to understand what challenges there are in the marketplace, and it was just an honor and a blessing to play a role in their success and to be involved with the students. So Mr. Rush did an excellent job in leading the campaign as well, so blessed to be here, and congratulations on your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. You did an awesome job. So what it was, was a business for good. Our students kind of like a shark tank, so they identified a nonprofit agency in our community, and they developed their own businesses. So the cupcakes were one of the businesses we're going to hear from in just a moment. And we also had an awesome opportunity to learn some economic skills and concepts, also helping our community, and it was a wonderful experience. So some of the standards that we covered, this was a learning experience, are things like markets and competition. Some of the things also were comparative advantages, so the students are going to talk a little bit about this business being an opportunity for them to learn about economics and maybe some of the things they might be doing in the future. This is a great part of the My Tomorrow program. Our students were able to collaborate. We have an awesome opportunity to use some great technology in our classroom. Our students even get to take their technology home. They were working on Google Docs, so maybe they could help you guys with your calendars. I was like whispering to Ms. Richardson, I said, "Maybe we should just get one of these guys here, take you out for about 15 minutes." They helped me out every day. So it was a great opportunity to do a real-world application. So the kids were actually creating a business. They forced, they were forced to work together sometimes, they got the opportunity to work together sometimes. So that was a great learning lesson, where we were using critical thinking. How can we help our community? What are some of the agencies? And the students were extremely creative, using technology, and I'm very, very proud of them. So when we actually presented, we presented in front of 47 business and community leaders, ranging from representatives from banks, from, also from our communities, and it was an awesome opportunity for our kids to share what they learned from this experience. We competed, our students competed also, for an additional $200 donation from the Mayerson Foundation. So initially, they gave us $25 for a startup of our business, and then the students competed. So it was a great, real learning experience. So as mentioned earlier, Mr. Foltz is from How We Done It. We also had Mr. Fairless, who helped with the Junior Achievement. He is a real estate investor, so the kids were able to learn from real people, not just me. And Venice on Vine came as well, it's an awesome organization, and the Greater Cincinnati Micro Enterprise Initiative. So we're going to hear from some students here talking about Celebrate Inc., and come on up, guys.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brittany Sanders, and I attend Withrow High School. As Mr. Rush said, I'm an 11th grader, and we chose, as our nonprofit organization, to be Celebrate Inc., because we felt as, I mean, well, let me tell you the background behind Celebrate Inc. Celebrate Inc. is a nonprofit organization that helps children from 2 to 12 get a birthday, because maybe their parents can't afford to have their birthday parties, or, you know, there might be an orphan or adopted, so Celebrate Inc. gives them a birthday party. So we chose this because we felt like, well, kids that age, not like us, we don't care, but, you know, they really need a birthday, like that says something about a child, like, "Oh, I didn't have a birthday," so that might could affect them when they get older, and they might not like that. So we felt like, no, we should give back to the community, and why not this? So... As you can see on you guys, in front of you guys, we made homemade cupcakes, and we decided to sell them with that, and I don't want to be the only one who talks, so I'm going to pass it to some other people in my group.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Boles, I'm also an 11th grader. So we chose to make cupcakes, and our additional startup cost was $25, so we realized that $25 was not going to be enough for us. So we had about five members in our group, and we all decided to pitch in a little bit of money. So the interesting thing about our cupcakes are, we called all the bakeries. We thought, we didn't know, we thought we were going to donate it, we did not know how we were going to get the cupcakes. We knew we wanted cupcakes, because Celebrate Inc. a birthday party, that's a great idea to go with, to sell. So we, I ended up making, me and my mom made the cupcakes. So we got about 100 orders each time, so imagine making just one oven, a regular oven, cupcakes, and we made those, so you guys, they're really good, you should try them. So we sold them for a dollar each, and, yeah, next slide. So our first day, so what we did, we took, we could not sell to the students, so that was one of our hurdles, but we decided to sell to teachers. And how we sold those, we did prepaid orders, and we're going to hear about our Excel sheet later. We took prepaid orders, and the teachers were really, really supportive. Some of our teachers had 20 orders, and we sold twice, and both of them had ordered 20 cupcakes both times, so and some ordered just 10, so that was a big help.
Hello, my name is Marisha, and I did the express sales sheet, actually, to organize how we would each give all the teachers what they wanted, and how people just wanted their cupcakes. And also, this is our easily poster, which we had basically passed out through our first project, actually, when we presented it first. And so we had basically ordered it to the teachers, for like basically 50 teachers, and some of them are from out, from school. And so as you can see, we ordered 50 from the teachers and 20 from outside. And basically, as Kennedy said, they both was... And basically, as Kennedy said, they both was sold for a dollar, and the cupcakes were basically sold most instead of the lemonade. We rarely sell the lemonade, so basically we just made more out of the lemonade. Basically made more out of the cupcakes than the lemonade. And we also served, and our solution was $180.60.
And we use comparative advantage and opportunity costs, and we also use social media. We actually posted on Mr. Rush's Facebook, and we got a couple orders off of those. So we just really took as many advantages to get exposed, to get our business exposed. And we, all of us, we took a lot of outside time out of the classroom. We really, I have two AP classes, and I, we woke up on like a eight, we had, we woke up, me and her, that's my best friend, and we woke up on eight o'clock in the morning, and we really worked on these cupcakes, and we really tried a lot. So that is end of us.
As Kennedy said, we, what we learned, well, what I learned, was competition advantage because, like, we weren't the only people that were doing this, so we had to really think outside the box. So I'm not going to say I made up the cupcake idea that was, you know, the mastermind. But I, at first, I wanted to sell candy, but I'm like, everybody's going to sell candy. So we have to, for, well, this is high tech, and for us, that's not something that we do every day, to be entrepreneurs. Everybody doesn't want to be entrepreneurs. So we all have to think like entrepreneurs. And thanks to Mr. Foltz and Mr. Rush, we got a feel to how it feels to be entrepreneurial and help another business, to be a businesswoman or man. So with me, I took that as, okay, well, I have to think like how they would think. Well, how would that person think? I have to think over them. So if I want to get my product out there, I have to reason with the customers. So instead of our cupcakes being 125, we have to reason with them, teachers, because, you know, they have children, they have their own life, so they, the order for them to help us, we have to help them. So with our cupcakes, not only are they homemade, but, you know, they're at a low, good price, and they're very delicious. You should try it. But, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Hello, my name is Charlene Jamison, and for our first quarter, in our economic class, for Business for Good, we had to choose a nonprofit organization that gives back to our communities. And what we had chose was Artworks, and also we chose it because like it was our topic, and our topic was jobs, and Artworks helps give jobs to our communities.
Artworks employs young artists to like make murals around the city. For example, the mural that you're on a previous slide earlier. And for another example, one of the artists is actually me. I was one of the artists for the Evanston mural on Duck Creek Road this summer, the past summer of 2015. And for our product that we decided to give out were bandanas that represent our Withrow pride and Withrow spirit. And this is actually one designed, and also one of the bandanas passing around right now. So this is actually, there was another design, but you just probably see them up there.
Okay, we had, the main reason why we had made bandanas is also due to a research that we had conducted. And during that research, it, we, the results came back that most teens spent their money, their money either on food or snacks, and number two was jewelry. So, I mean, accessories, however you want to classify it. So we just, so we decided to make bandanas because we know our research gave back, that's what all teens decide to spend money on the most.
I'm Brian Richardson. What we learned in Mr. Rush's class, we had went over different kinds of economic terms and things. We learned about opportunity costs, comparative advantage, comparative advantage, and trade offs. When we applied this to our business, we started off with the idea of selling cookies and cake and things, and everybody else around us was also doing foods. We kind of wanted to switch it up a little bit. And that's where we kind of got our comparative advantage. We decided that if we made bandanas, you know, we put a special school logo on that, that's something that nobody else was doing. So we made a specialized little school logo to go away with it. She, China actually designed it on a computer, which was amazing. And what we did was, we would go to Michael's, and we would get trade, uh, transfer papers and things like that, and we would print all the logo onto the bandana. So our comparative advantage was no other business was doing, you know, an accessory based specialized thing. So that was something that was completely unique to us. Our competitive advantage was that we would actually bring in our irons and put them in Mr. Rush's classroom and just plug them in. We'd have people working, just cutting the fabric, because bandanas was too much to start off at $25. Those beauty shop bandanas. So we plugged in our bandanas, we plugged in our irons, and we made our bandanas. And we would go straight from making them at lunchtime and during his class to selling them at the game and selling them at lunch. So we didn't have to, you know, bring them from home and, you know, do a lot of stuff and compartmentalize the whole thing. Our opportunity cost, we wanted to make, we wanted to use regular bandanas from like the beauty shop and things, but the transfer favorite was $12, and the bandanas were like 12 to 16. So we decided to go to Joann's Fabric and just buy a spool of fabric for $8. And with $20, we'd actually make 30 bandanas and sell them for five each. So there was a little give and take, but the result was very...
This was one of the comics, comments, give back from Willie Hill. "Great to see entrepreneurial minds being developed." Thank you very much.
So we, our whole class, because we, it was a class thing, we got to go to Rockdale and be teachers, and we got to teach basically about our projects and what we did. And it was more about how to spend your money and learning about money, what it is, how you use it, how you save, and then towards then you learn about the business and whatnot. And it was, it was very interesting. I had third graders, and I actually want to go into education, so it was just like a wake up call. And, but it was, it was a good experience to be able to give back to what we learned and give back to them. It was a really good day.
I, well, I taught fourth graders, and they were really like energetic. They were really happy to see that they were eager to learn, which is what I, far from what I thought, that they were going to be bad and, you know, throwing stuff at us. But they were, they were really interesting, because we had games for them to play. We had, you know, questions like, where do you want to be when you grow up? What is money? What is business? So they were really, I was really shocked that the whole thing was a good experience for me. That's all I have to say.
Hold up, there could be questions or comments. Are there any questions or comments? I think you guys have done a magnificent, terrific job, and something that I think is really innovative and out of the box. I heard the comment, thinking outside of the box. So you guys are on a great road to being entrepreneurs, perhaps? And so I appreciate your presentation. And thank you to our adult leaders who work with our kids to help them with their projects. And I also want to give a shout out to Principal Tubbs Wallace, who is in the audience. If you guys went to Rockdale, she's principal at Rockdale, so. We also have a math teacher, Ms. Richardson, who is in the audience, and so hello. Thank you all.
Can I add one?
Oh, you have a comment, at least?
I just want to add, you all, very impressive, I mean, the projects themselves, but also just your poise in speaking in front of the audience here, and just how impressed I am of how you're able to express yourself and what you learn succinctly in such an interesting way. So congratulations on that, too. And I think hopefully some of you will want to become entrepreneurs, but I heard one person say she wants to go into education. Just that these lessons that you're learning of how do I attack a problem in a creative way and come up with multiple solutions until we get to an outcome? Those are lessons, no matter what field you go into, are so great for you to be learning right now. I think your teachers will agree. If you want to become a teacher, that is one of the main skills you're going to need, that the lesson plan doesn't always go as you planned when you're in front of 30 actual, real people, whether they're fourth graders or 10th graders. And so just these lessons that you've learned in this project are so applicable to no matter what you're going to do as grownups in your career. So thank you for sharing this with us, and thank you for sharing this with us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I did want to mention that Junior Achievement is a great partner. Kim McGee is here. They work in our eighth grade classrooms, bring volunteers in to get the youngsters ready for Mr. Rush's AP class in economics in high school. And I wanted to announce that March 18th is Job Shadow Day, where Junior Achievement arranges for our youngsters to go to all kinds of companies all over the city and shadow people working in real jobs to get our youngsters exposure. So thank you very much. You're a great partner.
Absolutely, thank you. And I'm remiss for saying that I didn't recognize you were with Junior Achievement, who has been a partner to the district for many, many years. So thank you very much for your support. Yes. Nice. Very nice. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have any kudos? I do.
I wanted to give kudos to the Walnut Hills Band, who represented us very proudly in Paris on New Year's Day. Do we have anybody here from Walnut Hills? Congratulations. And, you know, this, this was such an incredible trip. I know when you planned it, you didn't expect it to come at the time that it did. And not only am I proud of you, on behalf of the board, I'm saying this, proud of you for taking the students here, having them perform, having them be role models, but they stood up to terrorists, and the terrorists did not win. We won. And I know that was not gone into lightly, that there was a lot of research that was conducted. The parents had a, had the final say, from what I understand, and they wanted their children to go. But we're so proud of them, not for just, you know, their musical ability and representing us, but for what they did and what they stood for. And I would like you to take that back to them.
Thank you.
Could you want other kudos? So I was thinking today, when I was dropping off my own children at a CPS school, and it was 16 degrees out, that I wanted to make sure tonight I gave kudos to all of our crossing guards and all of the people who greet our children outside, principals, teachers, assistant principals, et cetera, who stand out there no matter what the weather. 90 degrees this morning, 16 degrees, and just how important that role is. I mean, every morning, you're the first faces that our kids see, and that sets the tone for the rest of the day. So huge kudos to those folks who do that job for us every morning.
Thank you. Any other kudos? No? Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, there are a couple of retirements. We have, from our certificated personnel, one retirement, Frederick M. Johnston, who has been a teacher at Walnut Hills. And from our civil service personnel, Rosina Forte, who is a manager, Class 1C. We thank you for your service and for serving our children and our district for the years that you did, and we congratulate you and wish you well in the future.
Thank you. Doesn't look like we have any persons to speak from the public. And so we'll move right into our resolutions. Ms. Bolton, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Thank you very much. Yes, I present for adoption the Resolution Regarding Modified Tax Budget for the 1617 fiscal year. We have adhered to all the legal requirements regarding public notice and public hearing, and we'll proceed tonight with a vote on that resolution regarding the modified tax budget. I present as written, and hope for a second and passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Bates, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Yes, I have a resolution for advanced payment of taxes, and I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. Mr. Nelms, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Absolutely. I have a resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2015-16 school year, and I present as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or comments? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. Here we have a resolution to join the Ohio School Boards Association. And on behalf of the Cincinnati Board of Education, I will present it as written. Is there a second? Any discussion or comments? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms? President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. Mrs. Hoffman, will you please present the resolution for board consideration? The resolution to join the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund.
I thought this one was coming from the full board, too, so no problem.
It is, but if you could do it on behalf of the board.
Yeah, sure. I submit a resolution to join the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund on behalf of the full Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Question would probably be, I was under the impression that the Legal Assistance Fund always fit up under the Ohio School Board Association. So is that a separate service that we're paying for? Madam Treasurer?
I'm sorry.
The legal, sorry, Jan, to catch you off balance, but the Legal Assistance Fund, it's in alignment with the Ohio School Board Association. And I wanted to know whether or not, is it an extended part of the service or is it two separate membership fees that's required?
I think it's two separate. I believe it's two separate.
It's an additional contribution to the Ohio School Boards Association that goes to cases, they have a following that supports Amicus briefs and other cases.
So you recommend that we maintain this, right?
Okay.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman? Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. Superintendent Ronan, do you have a report?
Yes, as a follow up to your mentioning of the Walnut Hills Band playing in Paris, our Steve Shabat actually recognized the school on the floor in Congress, so I wanted everyone to know that. I thought that was really wonderful. There is a video, but we're not going to show that, but I thought that was a wonderful recognition on the part of Steve Shabat, so thank you. Also, I do want to extend our sympathy to the family of Tina Turnage. She was an elementary support specialist at Silverton and at Woodford, and she did pass away on December 29th, so our condolences go out to her family.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman? Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Still moved.
Any discussion?
First, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes. Number 16, uh, that's quite a sizable donation. Will there be an accounting of that, of the uh expenditure of that donation?
Yes, that is, um, yes. I, I have not gotten word back from the school what the donation was for, but I will follow up with a member to the board, unless Mr. Miles happens to know. Yeah, there is that beautiful wrought iron fence, but we're not certain if that's what that was for.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
Sure. Uh, um, one, uh, two questions. One, a number 22, this looks so interesting, the um donation of 91 paintings from Richard Pell's of New York.
I do know that Dr. Rudneck, um, our fine arts uh manager, was the one who acquired the paintings, although I am unfamiliar with Richard Pell's work, but I will ask him to come and maybe display some of the artwork for us.
And thank him for that connection.
And thank him for that connection.
Yeah. Um, and then my other one, I think just that a lot of the public is interested in, because it affects so many kids, is it looks like um an amendment to the agreement with First Student. And so some of the folks that knew more a little about that, I thought maybe want to, want to say a sentence or two about what, what that means.
Sure. Is there anyone who wants to talk about the agreement with First Student? Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. Davis is coming down.
Hello, Mr. Davis.
Hi, Mr. Davis.
Hello. Uh, the... The amendment to the board, uh, to the board in the treasurer's report reflects uh some discussions with First Student in regards to uh service deliveries and how we might go about improving the service delivery to our 32,000-plus students that we uh move every day. What we're looking for is just a, an, an opportunity to improve the service delivery uh in those ways and also get more information out as far as customer service and in a real-time fashion. So that the parents can inquire where the bus is in real time, know, have notifications of that. Uh, also, we're looking at the aspects of possibly having multiple uh service providers uh other than just our one service provider now, so that we don't run into problems with uh lack of um drivers or, or other accommodations that we need as far as for our students, as far as with special needs, or for the elementary school, or for any other of the school initiatives that we might be going moving forward with. So it gives us an opportunity to expand our service in a, in a rapid way. You know, because our, one of the primary objectives is get the kids to school and get the kids on, to school on time. And so we want to be able to deliver that quickly and without disruptions.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments here?
I, I would say that it's possible that this might represent additional monies, and we need to be aware of that. It's not for sure, but it could. But the, the cost benefit would be improved service. Uh, in the last couple of years, service and on time and what have you, has been compromised even with, through all the diligent effort on the part of the administration. So this is an opportunity to uh maybe cost a little bit more, but also deliver a higher quality of service. So it's a good thing, uh and appreciate the administration's work on, on making this a possibility with First Student.
I guess my question would be, when we talk about the increased cost, are we talking about because we're going to perhaps multiple providers or because we're ending a contract early? I don't know.
Well, um, I would say that there's a couple caveats in that. One, uh, we, right now, we have a fixed contract that has fixed pricing, which um when we put it out to bid, there's no guarantee that that pricing will come back in that particular arrangement. Uh, the other thing is, is that uh multiple vendors also allows competition though.
Right.
And with competition, that will hopefully depress the price somewhat and keep it at a reasonable rate if there is an increase at all.
Sure. Okay. That's good clarification. Mr. Moore, did you have any comments?
The only thing I was, wanted to add is, you know, by doing this, if we take back our routing too, then we can control, especially as we get into more um uh choice schools. So we're allowing our children to travel more, which gives us, this will give us more control over how we manage that. It'll control the number of routes too, which also affects the price.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Well, we made a motion to approve the report of the treasurer. We took a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gels?
Aye.
President Copeland Dunsby?
Aye. Uh, are there any inquiries and updates this evening? I don't have any listed. I wonder if anyone else did. Okay, great. Are there any assignments? I do want to, I think I do have a inquiry. We started the conversation related to um the need to um maybe change our schedule somewhat based on new legislation, and we hadn't finished that conversation at all. So I wanted to just bring that up while we're all together. Um, and maybe ask how we wanted to handle that. Yes.
I wasn't there for the one conversation that we had. I had to leave early. But the legislation doesn't prohibit us from meeting.
No.
It just prohibits us from getting paid.
Right.
And I say we do our job.
Right.
I shouldn't acknowledge.
We're all just so careful today. Ms. Hoffman?
Um, I think you're absolutely right, Board Member Bates. And I think that one of the questions we said was maybe this is a good time for us to reflect on whether we're doing our job as efficiently as we could. Um, and so maybe, uh, maybe that's the road we pursue, uh, if there are opportunities here for us to look at.
Right.
If there are any ways for us to cut back the number of meetings we have, because I think you're right, we have such a huge year ahead of us, that I don't know that there's going to be that much opportunity for us uh to, to um, to meet and not get paid. But I do also think there could be, um, there could be times for us to figure, this could be a good time to figure out if there's a way to be more efficient. And so I think that's what we might want to discuss.
Mr. Gels?
Yeah, and to that point, beyond the schedule that's already before us, I would probably like for you two to put your heads together to list all the issues just before us, so we can prioritize and come up with a plan, timeline, in relationship to the administration, uh, too. And I think moving forward, give us a good strategic template for knowing what's ahead.
Okay.
And what we need to tackle.
That's great. And one of the things that I do intend to do, and Vice President Bates doesn't know this yet, neither does um our superintendent, but I think it's very important um that we uh list the issues, as you just discussed, and literally um work with the administration to sort of put them on a timeline as to how we're going to deal with them uh progressively throughout the year. Um, in, in our past tenure, we have had regular meetings with the superintendent and her team, um, whomever she believes is warranted. I'm suggesting that we continue that, um, so that we can be as responsive, um, and give as much oversight collectively as a board that we can. Um, so I'm gonna um contact our vice president and we'll, you know, find some time to sit down. I have a running, I have a running list of issues. And so um we'll collaboratively um put them on some paper, get with our administration, and the next time we're together, talk about a progressive timeline, if that's okay, in order to get your feedback and your participation.
Yeah, I would, I think that's a good idea. And I think to open it to the other members to help expand that list.
Absolutely.
Or make sure that that list is as complete as possible.
Absolutely.
With a timeline. And I know in this past year, one of the things that was of concern to me is that as you, uh, the superintendent and the president and vice president delve into the agenda, uh, I know we produced a list of the titles or agenda items for the committee of the whole and for the board.
Yes.
And I think it would be important for all board members to see that list.
Sure.
As it gets developed, because I don't, I don't recall seeing that list and, and throughout the year. And I, I know that the interest of transparency and inclusion, I think would be helpful for us to begin to see it so that we're, it's not, we don't get the agenda items quite so late.
Oh.
Or almost as an arrival to the meeting. I think that would be helpful, so.
I will commit to letting you guys know the agenda items well in advance.
And, and I think the, you know, the old yellow sheet that we used to use, I think would be helpful.
Not a problem.
In that, and then using the committees to, to help form what kind of timelines they need for their.
Absolutely.
For their work uh plan.
Yes.
Have the list for the rest of the month, if, if you, if the board would like to know. We do have uh on Wednesday, January 20th, the Committee of the Whole, the Great Learning Choices Expansion Survey. I know Pat Neo-Miller was going to present. Um, and actually, you know, we are planning on surveying the 1,700 families who took part in the magnet lottery to get their input. So we would like to, we'd like to get your input on that survey. Now, I do have a request on January 25th, just because I know that's been mentioned as a rollout of a district-wide plan. Um, right now, we already have two presentations. It is Board Appreciation Month in January. So you know how we have children presenting, and we also introduce all of the board members in your background, which takes a while. And also the Smithsonian update, Pat Zerby from GE.
Yes.
It's the rollout of the GE program, and it did get moved from um the fall to now. So I don't feel comfortable calling, moving it again. So if, if it would please the board, I'd like to move our rollout of the plan to February 8th, two weeks after that, because that would allow us to, at our principal's meeting, which is right at the 25th, talk to our principals about the plan, so they can engage their LSDMC members, because I think that was the plan, to invite the community. And we do, we don't have time, the principal, it's, I hate to send something like that in an email. I'd like to have the principals in to say, we're going to be presenting this. Please help us encourage the community to come. So I would like to move that back into the February 8th board meeting, if it pleases the board, because for that big of an event, we do need a bit more of a timeline.
Sure. I personally don't have an issue with it.
I don't either.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Just so you know, because we did, um, the, I know that the press is doing a um, uh, on the, on the gifted school, they're actually going to do programming, and they were here today, and they're going out to interview the school. So they're getting the word out on that. The district, actually the state of Ohio report card, a portion of it is scheduled to come out this Thursday or Friday, the portion of it that is ready. Then I understand the second part of the district report card is going to come out in February. So it is already six or seven months late. And it's coming out in portions due to the issues with the testing company. But we have mailed home our uh report on Prepared for Success. So that is going out this week. And as I did let you know, Secretary of State John Euston is coming by, just wanting to talk about educational policy, and that is next week. So there's just a lot of items going on at the moment.
Excellent. All good stuff. And were you referring to the Prepare for Life report?
Yes.
Yes, this is a great.
That is being mailed home. We felt like, uh, we certainly need, our district is more than just some test scores that are being dribbling out from the state. And uh I think from all the comments recently, even Senator Laner has said, um, the report card this year is problematic. And as anticipated, I believe all districts in the state of Ohio have dropped as we tried to align with the common core, but we don't have, we really haven't seen final results yet. And we not, we're not sure what portion of it's going to come out. I think the Prepared for Success, which might be the high school piece.
Yes.
And I think the K-3 readiness might come out this week, and then the other portions of the report card next month. So that's all we know at this time. But I'm sure ODE will do a press release.
Board Member, can I make one assignment to us?
Yes.
All right. So last, the last meeting of the year, I made an assignment to the board that we go on a retreat, we set some goals, and we create a self-assessment for ourselves to hold ourselves accountable to those goals, ourselves accountable and the community, uh, or accountable to the community for those. Can we set a date? Can we make sure that we make an assignment to ourselves to actually make a, set a date for when that will happen?
Yes. Let's um ask.
Phyllis to send us.
Phyllis Davis to.
Google Calendar.
Google Calendar, that's right.
You scared me like, what?
Phyllis or Google Calendar, but I, we have so much work to get done.
Let's ask Phyllis via Google Calendar.
Right, that we, we need to.
To help us create a date.
Date.
And really be succinct with this prior to the end of February.
Mm-hmm.
To make a retreat date.
I think that's great.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. All right, having no other business coming for this board, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.